Hello, everyone. My name is Mario Venditti. I am the planner-schedule for the City of Northport Solid Waste. I got into this position, first I was a recycle driver for five years for the City of Northport, and then I became the planner-schedule after taking an interest in educating the residents on how to recycle properly. In my position, my day-to-day, usually I start out by visiting the new residents that schedule garbage and recycle containers to be delivered, and I will go see them and educate them on our solid waste guidelines. More or less, I'm more focused on the recycle part of it. After that, I will drive around the city, and I actually inspect recycle containers manually for contamination, and then I will take calls from drivers if there's any issues with repeat garbage in the recycle, and I will go educate those people as well. What I love most about the City of Northport is their residents are from all over the world, and I get to learn about the solid waste guidelines, where they come from, as well as educate them on the City of Northport's solid waste guidelines and how to recycle properly.
I decided to become a firefighter. I used to work in hospitality and group sales, and I always had friends that were firefighters, and I decided one day that I wanted to change my job and serve people, so I went ahead and went through an EMT and paramedic program, went to fire academy, and then I saw Northport were hiring, and I really liked what they had on there between their ISO rating and their beliefs and values and everything, so I applied. They gave me an opportunity. Every day is different, but for the most part, we start off the same. We'll get our gear onto the apparatus and make sure everything's operational, like our air pack, and then we also check the inventory, make sure we have all our medical equipment, everything's operational, that way we can respond to any emergency. So we're all...
Good morning, everybody. Today is Monday, April 7th, 2025, actually. It's 10:00 a.m., we're in the city chambers, and I call the City Commission Workshop Meeting to Order. Commissioners Prentice, Commissioners DeValle, Commissioners Langdon, Mayor Stokes, Vice-Mayor Emmerich, Commissioner Petro, there's Corin present for the meeting, also present City Manager Fletcher, interim City Attorney Golan, Assistant City Clerk Powell, Word Specialist Lane, and Fire Chief Titus, and Police Chief Garrison. Let us see. Julia, want to weed us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comments, Assistant Clerk?
No, sir.
Oh, I thought he said yes, sir.
No, no public comments, sir.
Oh, thank you.
I thought he said yes, too.
Yeah. Moving on, Presentations 25-2067, Presentation Regarding Price Boulevard Widening, City Manager, your item to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is a presentation that will be done by Deputy Public Works Director, Ms. Tricia Wisner.
Good morning, Tricia Wisner, Deputy Director of Public Works. With me, I have Anthony Friedman, the City Engineer, to provide update on this very important project that we're very excited to get started. So this is the Price Boulevard Widening Project Update. This project will provide much-needed improvements to about 2.8 miles of Price Boulevard between Toledo Blade and Sumter Boulevards, so it will go from two lanes to four lanes with a continuous turn lane in the center. The traffic signals will be improved and synchronized. We're going to reconfigure the intersection turn lanes for enhanced flow and safety. There'll be a new turn signal or traffic signal placed at, where is it? At Citizens Parkway for Fire Station 84. This project will include 10-foot-wide concrete multi-use paths on both sides of the roadway, and instead of having the roadside swales, we'll have an underground curb and gutter system for the stormwater. This will take about 17,000 tons of asphalt, 195 drainage inlets, and we'll have about 248 new streetlights added into this section. Here's an overview of what the cross-section of the road would look like. On the left-hand side, it's the signalized intersections, and on the right-hand side, it is the remainder of the roadway. As you see, for the signalized intersections, there is that median there for safety. Now, this team is extremely excited to be bringing this project to the construction stage, however, we know that we stand on the shoulders of so many people that have worked on this throughout the years, so thank you to...
A lot of dead bodies.
So thank you to this commission and previous commissions, and to all the city staff that over the years had continued to move this project forward, nonetheless of which is now Assistant City Manager, prior Deputy or Prior Director of Public Works, Julie Balia. So as we look through this, this project is long and has a lot of history, but there's two underlying themes that you'll see as we work through this. One, population growth changed the scope and changed some of the timeline, but funding. Funding was always part of the conversation as to what this project was going to look like and when this project would get to this stage. So in 2009, there was a study completed that said, hey, Northport, you need to start looking at widening Price, and at that point, we were looking at three lanes. Population continued to increase, looked at it again and said, maybe we should go to four lanes. So in 2014, direction was given to go ahead with design for four lanes. Over the next multiple years, there were many meetings with the commission and with the public to provide input as to what this important thoroughfare would look like, and in 2019, we received 90% plans. At that time, the commission provided approval for us to go forward and acquire all the stormwater parcels that were needed for this roadwork. During this time, the city continuously looked for grant opportunities and funding that would be available for this project, noting that there was a significant funding gap from the pay-as-you-go model to being able to bring this project to fruition. And in 2021, 100% plans were received, however, the project was put on hold due to lack of funding. As the city continued to look for opportunities, it became apparent that we were going to need funding via borrowing, so in May of '22, the City Commission approved an ordinance calling for a referendum question to be placed on the next general election, which was in November. While we were waiting for the election, Hurricane Ian came by and showed us some weaknesses within Price Boulevard. This picture on the right is at Blue Bridge Waterway Crossing that shows that Price definitely sustained major damage from that waterway. We were very happy that on November 8th, the referendum passed, and the first thing we did was bring back to commission an amendment to the engineers' agreement so that we could re-engineer those crossings based upon the lessons learned from Hurricane Ian. As the reengineering was going, we kept this project moving forward with getting a construction, engineering, and inspection firm on. This is AECOM, that was approved in February of 2024. This team is going to be the boots on the ground to inspect the work and the quality of the labor and the materials that are in to make sure it is at the specifications put in that scope. They'll be sending things off to labs to be tested and really making sure that we're holding that line. In September of '24, after review of 100% plans by FDOT and many other eyes, we were able to put out RFB 2024-28 for a contractor to bid on this project for us. In October of '23, or October of '24, rather, the city closed on bonds for this. Now, the bonds were issued at a very nice rate of 3.3, and this, we get a lot of questions on this. Why didn't the city borrow the full $80 million here? Well, the referendum called for this $80 million to be paid back by surtax. The finance department and the bond council and the finance advisor looked and said, you don't have $80 million to be able to pay back. So this is a great example of the city borrowing within its means. Then on December 4th, we received one bid from Watson Civil, and on March 18th, thank you to this commission, that agreement was approved, and we are now entering into the stages of actual construction for Price Boulevard. Anthony?
Thank you, Tricia. So as Tricia just mentioned, we have an executed contract with the contractor, Watson Civil. Our construction is estimated to be complete in fall 2027 and cost just under $80 million. We held a pre-construction meeting last week on April 2nd and included representatives from the contractor, Watson Civil, our CEI firm, AECOM, FDOT, several utilities, the school district, USPS, and multiple city departments. We recognize that throughout this job, there's going to be a great need for collaboration with these groups, so this was the first step to get everybody in the room with the contractor, just get everybody on the same page. We anticipate an issuance of a notice to proceed on May 19th. This was the date that the contractor requested to give them some time to get their locates done, get their equipment staged, and their crews ready, as well as have the utilities relocated for this job. The contractor provides 883 days from notice to proceed to substantial completion, and then another 30 days for punch list items, bringing the total contract length to 913 days. The anticipated first push of construction is to go from west to east, but it's important to note that the entire road will be a construction area at all times. They're not going to be completing like a finished product west to east, it's just going to be the first step, and then they're going to be continuing construction from there. The traffic management plan is to keep the roadway open in both directions at all times, however, there may be occasional closures and detours needed when work at the waterway crossings is being completed, which is going to be one of the first things that's done. So right off the bat, the hardest challenge with transportation is going to happen, but we anticipate that will get easier after the bridges are complete. The project, like I said, is going to begin with the relocation of the underground utilities, and that's one of the reasons for the notice to proceed on May 19th. There's going to be work that's done prior to that, it's just going to be done by the private utilities relocating their facilities. And the work schedule is anticipated to be from 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Touching upon the coordination, we've met with the U.S. Postal Service to discuss the plan for mail service, so as part of the project, everybody along Price will have their mailboxes removed. The plan is to, we have identified three sites to establish temporary mailboxes, so all of the residents will receive a key which they can use to access their temporary mailbox, and there'll be parcel lockers there as well for packages. The solid waste plan is to stay on the same days, it'll just move earlier to avoid any conflicts with construction, so we hope to have pickups happening before construction starts for the day. For the school buses, we've spoken to the Sarasota County School Transportation Department, and they are evaluating minimizing traffic on Price, so if there's any stops along Price, they still will need to send buses down there to make their pickups and drop-offs, however, the buses that don't actually need to stop, they're going to look to routing on alternate routes to reduce the amount of traffic on Price. There's a gopher tortoise and wildlife survey scheduled for today, which will also be used for construction. As part of the project, while we're working within the city's own right-of-way, there will be a need to go on to private property to make grading adjustments and tie the driveway into the new road, which required temporary construction easements. At this time, we have about 60% of these, 60 to 70%, and we're hoping that as construction starts and continues, some of the hesitant landowners will be more willing to sign off on their easement, otherwise there may be a need for some minor field adjustments like adding yard drains or hopefully not, but possibly handrails, things like that to accommodate not being able to go on to the private property. And then we have established a couple of sites for outreach for residents if they have any questions. There's a project website, northportfl.gov/price, an email box dedicated to this project, as well as a phone hotline dedicated to this project. It's been a pretty good outlet for getting people's questions answered.
And with that, if the commission has any questions, we're here.
Thank you very much. Finally, finally. I know there are some people out there who don't believe this will ever happen until they finally see construction going on up there, so it's like long, long overdue. It's like everybody has, I'm up first. I just have a couple of real quick questions. When will we hear back from the school board as far as the scheduling for the buses or any changes that may occur? Because we're talking about construction to begin, what, roughly on around the 18th?
Yeah, I don't think it's really something we're going to hear back. I think we just notified them, and they're aware of our work zone, and they're going to make adjustments in the coming year.
So they'll be notifying citizens if there's going to be anything that's going to be different than what has been happening?
Yes, and it really shouldn't affect their pickup because if there's, if the stop is on Price, they're still going to use it. It's just really their way to get, they're picking up Audis to go to the high school, they'll just try to use Tropic here or some other route to get there.
All right, cool. I saw that the hours are, what, seven or roughly seven to five? Is that Monday through Friday? Any weekend work going to go on, any Saturdays or Sundays?
It's possible. They have to give us notification before they do that because we need to make sure that we have inspectors present. They did indicate that it might be of something that they're interested in, and which we would be like, we would likely like to accommodate that because we're trying to expedite the work as much as possible.
And just curious, was there any thought given and what reasons might there have been to or not to like do a lot or some of this work overnight, which would take some of the pressure off of the daytime traffic?
Given that the road is lined in residences, we're trying to reduce noise disturbance at night.
That's what I figured, and there's a lot of people living on that street, so, all right. Thanks, that's all I had. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I love the update on this. You had mentioned that you've already contacted USPS with their routes, but what about like FedEx, Amazon, all those? Because that could create a huge problem with Amazon shoppers. Everybody uses them, I use them, but if they're parking on the roadway to deliver packages, you're going to have some clustering throughout the whole day.
Yeah, that is something that we've thought about. Unfortunately, there's not really a way to dictate how they make their delivery. Right now, they kind of just stop in the road and make their delivery anyway. That's probably what's going to happen.
Yeah, but can't we just say no parking in the roadway? Can't they pull up into the driveway to make their deliveries and stuff like that? I mean, just to keep the congestion off of Price, you know, that becomes the homeowner's responsibility on getting the packages, but we got to keep that road open. Let's say there's four deliveries all in a row, you know, you're just going to create a nightmare out there. Not you, but I'm just saying that that situation would create a nightmare for anybody trying to get by, especially if this lane's gone and we're just going to eat, you know, it's going to be a tough situation, and it's something that you might want to look into prior to allowing that going out there. I'm just saying, you know, that may be one of the biggest boo-boos that we're going to face, especially when we're getting ready to go into construction that everybody's excited for, but let's not make it a mess in the process.
Absolutely, and we've been looking at all options with that and the communication that can go to the private entities. It's difficult to make it a no parking because being able to enforce that as quickly as it is, but we are looking at all opportunities for communication on that.
Yeah, and the other one that I had, when you talked about the solid waste doing it in the early hours, and this is just the same thing, are they going to be done on Price by like 7:00 a.m.?
Yes, we've been working with the solid waste team. They're going to be looking to do that Tuesday and Friday, pick up early in the morning, probably starting around 6 o'clock and just getting out of the way as quickly as possible.
I mean, that would be a great suggestion. I mean, just to get them out of there, we're not messing with it anymore. Yes, they need their garbage picked up, but if we can be out of there before construction starts again, then we're not part of that jammed-up problem, you know, with the city in our absence.
Yes, and actually, you guys recently approved a noise ordinance exemption process that we put in place really for this process, so we're looking to modify their pickup time, get them out of the way so construction can start.
And that's all I had. I just wanted to say thank you very much for the timeline and everything that's gone through this, because you get naysayers out there that think they know everything, and this is the actual facts on what took place, on where we started and how we got here, so thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Very nice. That's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Langdon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is indeed a happy day. Just a couple of questions. I noticed that the notice to proceed on May 19th, we really want to see a lot of upheaval before May 13th, so is it our utilities team that will be digging things up? I mean, I'm hoping that there is digging up of stuff before the 13th, correct?
There are private utilities that will be moving, they're underground utilities. You'll be seeing directional boring, it won't be, you know, huge openings, but you'll see equipment out there. We also have been working with Watson Civil, they know that we desperately need to get vehicles out there and show some activity even before the notice to proceed, so they'll have, they'll begin mobilizing some equipment as well.
Right, right, thank you for that. I take Hillsborough Boulevard almost every day, and as I know you're aware, the Peace River pipes have been going in for the past year. Now, that's only one lane in each direction, well, that's sort of what Price is now, right? I really liked how they did things. I don't know how familiar you are, but they had those electronic boards announcing road closures and that kind of thing ahead of time. They had the funky little arms, you know, the red lights with the arms, but you know, it flowed really well, and that was a massive project. So if you haven't looked at that, I think it just might be interesting to look at that because they did a good job. So thank you for that, 7 to 5:30. Just one other question. The temporary construction easements, I find it troubling that we have to work around people who didn't give us access. Are there other options to that? I mean, what might that look like? It would look...
It could potentially be less of a smooth transition than we would like if they do not provide us access. So we've had staff go door to door and try to explain this. We've, we're making another push to reach out to those residents. We've seen in other projects where when work starts, the homeowner kind of wakes up a little bit and realizes this might be in their best interest, so we're really hoping to gain additional compliance and voluntary signing of the temporary construction easements. The contractor is aware of this, they've worked in these situations before, and are, you know, will be working to provide the best possible result even if we didn't get the temporary construction easement. But again, any opportunity that we have to engage with those residents and talk with them, we're really trying to put that point out there that their best possible scenario is to allow us to go on their side of the property for a little bit to make this smooth transition.
So if they don't give us permission, what will their property look like?
It will be a case-by-case scenario, but it may be a little disjointed with the grading of the driveway or where drainage has to go, and Anthony even mentioned potentially even a handrail. If we can't get the slope to be appropriate, and there's the potential for someone to fall or something, we would need to provide those guidance or those protections.
I just, I find that stunning that we would have to do that. Oh, I mean, I'm not criticizing you guys at all, I mean, it's not your fault, but it's just the, wow, wow. And there's nothing, I mean, I hate to use the word eminent domain, but there's nothing comparable that gives us permission. It's just, what about the sidewalk? Wouldn't that disrupt the grade and perhaps even the location of the sidewalks that we're putting in?
No, the sidewalk is all within the city-owned right-of-way, so it would be really at the edge of the city-owned right-of-way and the parcel. We're avoiding any monetary exchange for this. That has been one option that other municipalities have used in the past, but we've been doing a good job getting voluntary compliance, and really, this isn't a standard situation for, you know, a monetary item.
Okay, thank you for that, but excellent job. I'm so happy that this project is, I'm just so looking forward to seeing dirt. It'll be very exciting to see dirt. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner DeValle?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to say, you know, thank you to everybody, you know. This project's gone on so long that there's no people that are not alive anymore that contributed to this project, so thank you to staff for everything. One thought that came up to me was, you know, we finalized the funding for this, well, let's suppose that during construction, we have a hurricane, and it causes damage to some of the, you know, construction equipment, you know, some of the unfinished roadways or whatever. Are we going planning to keep track of the possibility of getting any other grants sometime during construction, you know, that might, you know, kind of pay us back for a little bit of what we're paying for this? I mean, it's just a thought of, you know, what we could, you know, look at, you know, just keep our eyes open, you know, if something does, you know, occur. And that's, that's just a thought, you guys can look at it if you want. My other thought about this was, I noticed that there's going to be 248 streetlights over 2.8 miles. That comes out to 248 stoplights over 14,784 feet, otherwise, one stoplight every 59.61 feet. Now, when you consider that our lots are 80 feet wide, that means you could have two streetlights if they're not alternated one side of the street and the other, but you could have two stoplights, or not stoplights, I keep saying that, two streetlights on one 80-foot-wide property. Now, on my street, I own two lots, so I have 160 feet, and there is a streetlight right at the end of my property on one end, and then just pass it on the other, so that's like 160 feet. Number one, at 60 feet... Number one, at 60 feet every streetlight, is that except, going to be excessive on our FPL bill? Number, okay, I'm cheap. Number two, if we have a streetlight every 60 feet and, you know, right in front of someone's property, are two streetlights in front of a house gonna be a little bit, little bit too bright, so to speak? My wife and I go out whenever the space station comes over and we like to see the space station, the streetlights, you know, they kind of wind it out. But is there, what's the situation on where those will all be?
So, they will be distributed on both sides of the street. They'll also be kept to the lot corners as much as possible. So, it's not like somebody will have a streetlight right in front of their house. It also, the, the plan was just to meet minimum Green Book criteria. So, the number of lights is not more than what we need. It's what's needed per FDOT Green Book. And there will also be glare screens provided that prevent excess light from entering the residence. It's going to be kept on to the road itself.
Okay, thank you.
And then if I can go back to the grants, we're always looking for grants. Most grants require that you submit prior to project even starting. However, you know, we work very closely with our grant team and this project does have a $1.5 million grant from FDOT included in it.
And the lights will be LED, so they're a little bit more energy efficient. So, not as much of an impact on the FPL bill.
I guess it's better than a car through the front of your house, having a little bit of light, right?
As a, as a point of clarity, that's what I wanted to ask. What's the, I mean, what's the criteria on where lights go? Well, not where lights go, but how they're spaced? I mean, who makes those kinds of decisions? Like, do you guys just sit around in a conference room somewhere and say, gee, I think we should have, you know, so many lights? Or how, how does this get done? Just so people who might be listening don't think like we just, you know, have stock money invested in the lighting companies.
Right, no. So, there's average luminances that are required based on, you know, the design standards that are out there. And it, it goes as deep as to like the roadway material. So, darker roads absorb more light, so you need more lights to illuminate them. But really, it's just the spacing that's necessary to achieve that average luminance at the road.
So, there's actually a method to the madness.
Yes.
The light bulb. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on, let us see. Any public comments?
No public comment.
All right. Then we'll move on to the 25-2068 presentation regarding Sarasota County Hurricane Ian Resilience SRQ Voluntary Property Buyout Program. City Manager, you're right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is being presented by Grant Division Manager Valerie Malinowski.
She's back. Right, who is, who is running now, trying to sneak out. I knew she was trouble. I saw her this morning. Thank you, Tony. Yes, sit down. Whenever you're ready. Take it.
I drink a lot of water in the morning. All right. Okay, good morning. Valerie Malinowski, Grants Division Manager. And this morning, I have a little presentation for you regarding the Hurricane Ian Resilient SRQ Voluntary Buyout Program. As you know, Sarasota County received a little over $200 million from the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Fund through the U.S. Housing and Urban Development as a result of Hurricane Ian. Sarasota County calls these grant funds resilient SRQ. After gathering project ideas from those affected by the storm, the county board allocated $6.4 million towards voluntary buyout program. The voluntary buyout program is being used by properties with structures that were impacted by Hurricane Ian and flood-prone areas. The grant cannot be used to purchase vacant land. The grant pays for fair market value and the goal is to reduce risk and improve community resilience. To be eligible, a homeowner must have owned the home at the time of Hurricane Ian. The home must also be in its designated disaster area or repetitive flood property with two or more insurance claims. The designated disaster area in Northport is along the Mayacahatchee Creek Corridor. The city must keep the acquired properties forever as open space, recreational land, or flood plain management. The Community Development Block Grants always must have impacts to low-to-moderate-income persons or demonstrate urgent need, which is also income-limited. Homes that are in low-to-moderate-income census tracts of 51% or more automatically qualify for the grant. The developed homes within the Mayacahatchee Creek tiered properties are within the 51% LMI, or low-to-moderate income. Again, if this program is used, the acquired properties must be used for open space. We can't keep the building or build another one once we own it. It's very limited future uses allowed. A little bit about the process timeline. The city is the applicant for this program on behalf of homeowners. The application period closes on April 30th. After that date, Sarasota County Commission will make their final funding decisions. We've had a total of five property owners express interest in the program. Four of them are within or close to the Mayacahatchee Creek Corridor and in a flood zone. If the city purchases privately-owned lot with a single-family home assessed at $246,400 with a $50,000 homestead exemption, it would result in a loss of approximately $739.85 in ad valorem taxes. Additionally, the city would lose special assessments, an average of about $300 for Fire District, $302.50 for Solid Waste, and approximately $253.16 for road and drainage, and $46 for road and drainage capital improvements. This would result in a total impact of approximately $1,641 in last ad valorem taxes and special assessments. Next steps. Homeowners had the opportunity to complete the special interest survey that went to Sarasota County. In return, the county notified us of the interested applicants. I've contacted the interested applicants and heard back from three of the five. City staff will meet this afternoon to review the properties, make sure that the acquisition aligns with city properties, and then staff will begin working on the applications. After applications are submitted, county staff will review and present to county commission. The anticipated county commission date is April 4th. After agreements are executed with Sarasota County, Northport will begin the acquisition process with homeowners. Sarasota County reimburses the city for property demo and relocation assistance and land becomes open space. Before we get to the questions, as I mentioned, we had a total of five property owners express interest in the program. Four of them are within or close to the Mayacahatchee Creek Corridor and in a flood zone. One is ineligible because the home is a rental and not a primary residence. That homeowner is applying to the Elevate Florida program, which allows secondary home applications. And that program will run very similarly to this one. The state's accepting applications through April 11th. And if there's any homes that are within Northport, the state will come back to us and let, let city staff know. There's one property that's located in the area between South Cranberry Boulevard and Chamberlain Boulevard, and that is not in a flood zone. So, that one would not be eligible. I put out on everybody's area there on the DIES map. And so, on that map, the top page should be the Creek Parcels. It should say Creek Parcels. And I have to apologize for the print quality. Me and the printer were fighting this morning. I lost the battle a little bit, and so my, the color's really not great. But if you look at the Creek Parcels property, on the northern, you know, towards the top left of the page, there's a little red outline there right outside of the green space area, and that's Banana. It's the Banana property, Banana Street's the name of it. And that homeowner is eligible and they're interested. So, they're in the tiered properties. Just below that, there's a little black outline one, and that one is on Sensation Street. That property owner is also eligible and interested. So, those are our two, for sure, property owners that are tier-two owners that are interested. Just below that, outlined in blue, is Casanova. That is in a flood zone, but it is not one of the Mayacahatchee tiered parcels. That is also one of the homeowners that I've reached out to that I haven't heard back from yet. So, I, I tried making contact with them and I have not heard back from them yet. Finally, on that same map, there's a green outline. That one is on Snowbird. That one is a tier-two property, but he is the homeowner that does not live there full-time. It's a secondary. He rents that parcel out and he's applied to Elevate Florida. On the second map there, that one is Cartwright Light, Cartwright Lane. And that area, it's highlighted in pink there in the top left. That area is between South Cranberry and South Chamberlain Boulevards. The parcel's not in a flood zone there. So, I, you know, one of the, the criteria is to have repetitive flood losses, like more than one flood insurance claim. And I have also not been able to reach that homeowner yet, speak to them in person. So, I don't know that that property's gonna be eligible. But that's the summary of the program, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. I got really just a couple. It's amazing, only five, four actually, property owners. And are these tier ones or tier two?
They're tier twos. The ones, those three that are right along the creek there, those are tier twos.
I remember commission voted a year or two back, we voted not to pursue the acquisition of tier twos at, at that time. Am I correct?
I remember that.
Yeah, I think so. So, you know, all right. In total, how, how many properties are there left in tier one and tier two if we know that, that, that are yet potentially could be, could be purchased if we had the money and, and if the property owners had the inclination to sell? We know that number?
Okay, we're checking.
Tricia Wisner, Deputy Director. At the last report, it was three in tier one and 13 in tier two.
Interesting, all right. I mean, you know, the, obviously, what would be great, I'm preaching probably to the choir here, but to be able to acquire all those tier one and tier twos over a period of years would be nice because it would lend itself to the ability to put a couple of, you know, moderate-sized retaining ponds in potentially with some culverts that would help really mitigate flood problems and help capture water, which would add to our potable and reclaimed water needs. I mean, there's just like a whole lot of benefit to being able to get our hands on these properties. So, perhaps at some point, we might wanna revisit our approach to tier two. But that's subject for another day, I suppose. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just need some clarification. You had stated a couple of dates in this thing where the deadline was, I believe it was April 30th.
Correct, yes.
But then you went on to say that when the county was going to assess these situations, you said April 4th.
Oh, June 5th.
So, that would be...
June 5th.
The deadline is April 30th, and then they would make their recommendations June 30th.
In June, yes, sorry.
So, I was kind of saying, well, how can they decide before they've been applied?
Sorry.
That's all I wanted to get clarified. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I had, Mayor.
Mr. Langen.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize, City Manager. I know we discussed this, but I can't remember the answer. I'm aware that FEMA buys properties that will buy back properties from property owners for habitual flooding situations. Have we pursued FEMA? Are, are our properties eligible for FEMA? I think we had kind of thought that they were ineligible, but I don't remember beyond that.
So, anybody with a repetitive loss, more than two flood insurance claims, the Elevate Florida is FEMA funds.
Okay.
Okay, so, that's being funded through another section of FEMA. On a day-to-day FEMA acquisition is the Flood Mitigation Assistance is the name of the grant, and we've never here pursued it. The city actually applies on behalf of the homeowner. There's a 25% match on that, that the homeowner has to pay. They have to foot the 25% match, and I think that probably scares some people away that they don't wanna do that. But this Elevate Florida's the same. It's also a 25% match, but that is FEMA funds. So, you know, it's just being passed through the state.
And I'm not that familiar with that program. Is it, they buy out property owners? Do they put them on stills?
Both, yes. All of that. It does all of that. And that application period closes on April 11th. That's this Friday.
Have we communicated, outside of the property owners who expressed an interest that we're engaged in, have we done any outreach to the other property owners that are along that creek?
I do know that some letters were sent out to the two that are very interested in the program because they were, bless you, those were ones that had expressed interest in the past. Like, I believe they were the two that after Hurricane Ian contacted the city and were interested in selling their parcels. And I do know that communications has been helping us push out the message. And the county, I checked with them also because we also had some concerns that maybe the message wasn't getting reached to the right audience. And Sarasota County also did their own media campaign on it.
Good, because I'd really like to squeeze as much juice out of these programs as we can. I have not been supportive of using taxpayer money to buy these parcels along the creek. So, whatever we can do to facilitate resident engagement in this program, I think would be terrific. And I think that's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeVal.
Thank you, Mayor. When I first looked at some of this information, you know, the first thing that struck me was, you know, that the application date is coming very quickly. And, you know, considering, you know, there's really not that many properties that are available for this. And I just hope that we're reaching out as, with as much effort as we can to get in touch with these people. You know, and some people are just gonna say, no, you know, I have my house and I wanna stay there. And, you know, and I can't blame them for that. The, the cost of demolition would be included in this?
Yes, that's reimbursable cost, yes.
Undeveloped properties, not available?
No, it has to have a flood loss.
All right. My only other, my only other comment with this is that recently, I know we talked, you know, we were talking about parks and recreation, and there was a little factoid that, you know, we have a goal trying to have, you know, some kind of park amenity within a half mile of each residence. You know, if we do have some of these available, you know, maybe they could be something like a passive park. You know, even if it's just, you know, a park bench or something, or maybe some playground equipment. But I, I just think this is an opportunity here also. Thank you very much for your work.
Mr. Petro.
Yes, Commissioner DeVal echoed some of my questions. Yes, Commissioner DeVal echoed some of my questions. Question on the dates, when was this open? Is it approaching rather quickly?
It was opened on March 5th. So, in the grant world, we don't, usually don't get a long time, to be honest with you. It's not uncommon to have two weeks, three weeks, four weeks to apply for a grant. March 5th was when Sarasota County initially launched this program.
Are they trying to get rid of the money, or what's the?
Yeah, they are.
Short of a window?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, but it's over a month, you know, that we've had, but, so Sarasota County was collecting the information from the homeowners, and I just received that information last Tuesday. That's why I wasn't able to, you know, modify the PowerPoint or get the maps to you in advance, because I just received all the interested homeowners last week on Tuesday. So, the county had it open on March 5th until the end of March for them to submit through Sarasota County an interest, and then on Tuesday, I received the parcels. And then I started making phone calls and emails and, you know, those lovely things to try to get ahold of everybody, so.
So, and if I'm understanding this correctly, the city's engagement in soliciting or advertising cannot be started prior to those dates, that day, right?
Yeah, yeah, March 5th would have been the earliest, and I don't, I know the county started doing some outreach right away, and then Jerome and I talked about outreach, like, a little bit later, and did some, you know, with, through communications, but...
Since there's not that many properties, are we utilizing any other methods of solicitation besides sending a letter, maybe going door-to-door? I mean, there's not that many properties at all?
Yeah, that, well, first, we would need to know if they were repetitive loss, like to who to target.
How would you find out that?
Another thing, well, that's a thing, I don't know. You're relying on homeowners, and then another thing is, yeah, you need to have homeowners that are interested. Like, one of the parcels that I'm going to be working with, they even had their own hesitancy of doing this program, because if they sell this parcel and their property, then they have to go buy something else, right? Market's not great, right? Whenever it comes to interest rates and those types of things, and they bought whenever interest rate was lower. And he asked, if I don't like the fair market value, or I can't find a home to buy, if I sell this one to the county, can I back out? Right? So, you can't make people apply to this? They have to be willing to sell the property, basically. And if they don't want to sell, if they don't want to move, you can't make them do that.
Voluntary?
It's, yeah, exactly.
So, the fair market bill, that leads to this question. Does that include the extent of damage? I mean, if the house is damaged significantly, the fair market value would be much less, including the damage.
Yeah, yeah. If they didn't fix the damages, it's going to be less, you know, that's, that's what it is.
So, if there's a roof is gone, the house is not going to be worth much?
Right.
Okay, that's right. And I take that $6.46 million, that's countywide, right?
Countywide, correct, yes. So, that includes all of Sarasota County.
And how did they, do we know how did they come up to that number, or?
I, I remember that the county commission met, and they had a big spreadsheet on there, because we watched some of it, and they, they put these funds in different buckets. So, they, like, they have the infrastructure fund, which is paying for some of our water control structures and things. And then they had a homeowner improvement project, where they actually helped reimburse some low-to-moderate-income households for damages that they had, instead of buying it out. And then the buyout program, and then there was also the nonprofit. So, there's a whole bunch of different buckets, and the county took that $200 million and just divided it across buckets. But one thing to note, you have to be low to moderate income for this program, or be in a low-to-moderate census tract. Not all the city is in a low-to-moderate-income census tract. And low-to-moderate income, even for urgent need, is at 120% of the median income, which is $90,000 for two people. So, if you make more than that, you don't qualify for this program either. Or if you're not in a census tract, like if you're in Welland Park, that is not a low-income census tract, right? So, there's qualifying criteria for this program that not everybody's going to qualify for too.
And do we plan to make a second attempt on those, the ones that have been silent or did not reply to?
Oh, yeah, yes, definitely. I was actually going to wait until this afternoon, whenever the internal city staff took a look at it, because like, the one property on Cartwright, it's not in a flood zone, you know, like, I don't know how staff feels about acquiring a parcel in between Chamberlain and Cranberry, you know, it's not in the Mayacahachi Creek Corridor. I was going to wait until after that meeting today to reach out to them a second time.
And one, that was the rental?
Yes.
The guideline set up by the county, right?
The one that's the rental, he's been referred to the state program, which is Elevate Florida, because they allow second homes for that program.
That's it for me, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Commissioner Petro, if you would like to learn more about how the county made their decision as to how to allocate the $200 million, I believe if you go to their, their website, there's, there should be a decent amount of information. I haven't looked recently, but usually, they do a pretty good job, like we do a pretty good job of putting that information up there and making it available to citizenry who is interested in how they parcel out that, or what decisions they made and how they made them. There's also a number of county commission meetings that took place regarding this, which you could probably watch back, which will also give you a feel for how they decided how much goes into what pockets, because they do like we do, you know? They figure it out. Anybody have anything else on this item? Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Do we have any public comments?
No public comments, sir.
Right, any general public comments?
No public comments, sir.
My goodness. Do we have anything else we might want to do today?
No.
Jeez, that's a surprise. It is 10:54, and I adjourn this meeting.